Pledge of leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Real roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Graven.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes, here.
Mayor Hall.
President. Consent agenda, items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move to approve the minutes of the special regular meetings of January the 16th, 2024, the bills and payroll for the last half of January 2024, and the mayor's travel expense for IML. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the council, city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Do we have anybody that'd like to address the council tonight? Okay, so we're going on to acknowledgement. Who's taking this one?
Yeah, Mark Hirsch is retiring after 35 years at the Public Works Department. Not too, not too many people sticking to, stay at a job for 35 years, and we really, really appreciate him. He couldn't make it tonight, but we've got a plaque for him. He's gonna stop by and get it. But he started back in 1988, actually earlier than that, in the summer help, but moved up through the ranks and actually his very last day, he was on the backhoe. So, and he retired on his birthday. So he went out on his own terms and wish him all the best. Great guy.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, ready to move to new business.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-3271, giving notice to Illinois Department of Transportation of the Fourth of July parade, sponsored by the City of Mattoon.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps is seconding, and any questions or comments, or would you like to make any, you got more of these?
Yes.
Just a general statement you would like to make?
Standard, we do this every year. We have to give notice to IDOT for the planned parades going across 16, 19, 20.
All right. Okay, all right. All right, anybody ever have, anybody has any question or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution number 2024-3272, giving those to the Illinois Department of Transportation of the Baker Fest Parade to be sponsored by the City of Mattoon.
And a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Phipps, and any other comments other than already made? All right, roll call.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2024-3273, giving those to the Illinois Department of Transportation of the Veterans Day Parade to be sponsored by the City of Mattoon.
And can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Go ahead. And any additional comments anybody has? And if none, roll call.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2024-3274, giving those to the Illinois Department of Transportation of the Celebrate Downtown Parade to be sponsored by the City of Mattoon.
And a second on that motion.
I'll second that.
Four in a row. Okay, and any other additional comments? And let's do roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
A motion to adopt resolution 2024-3275, approving a grant agreement between the City of Mattoon and the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, authorizing the expenditure of $185,000, or as much as may be needed to match the required funding to complete the proposed sidewalk improvements and ADA ramps on Western Avenue from 43rd Street to Noe's Court for the Riddle Elementary Sidewalk Project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and anybody like to make any comments about this one?
The question, when it says, "or as much may be needed," is that more than the $185,000? If so, do we have an estimate of what it might be?
It, it, it could be. This is their estimate right now. If they run into a problem, something like that, and there has to be a change order, then they'll, you know, we split the cost. But no, hopefully it will not be that. Hopefully, hopefully it even comes in lower than what they're estimating the cost is, so.
I just don't want things open ended.
Yeah.
That was already at the top end of the estimate anyway, so I don't, I don't anticipate much overage at all.
No.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2024-2444, waiving the formal bidding requirements for the purchase of a new dry prime CD 300M electric pump from Xylem Incorporated, authorizing the allocation of $129,475.45 of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to pay for the purchase and authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase order.
And a second on that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments anybody like to make?
You know, we had the drought. We rented a, an eight-inch pump out at Lake Mattoon to pump to Paradise. This is a 12-inch pump. This is something that we would own. We can move it in and out, out at the lake as needed. You know, we can be stored inside on a trailer, brought out to the lake if we go through another drought. But then again, it doesn't have to sit out there during the spring or the fall when we don't need it out there. Can also be used at Lake Paradise to pump into the water treatment plant if needed. So have multiple purposes for that. And it just thought that would be a good thing that could be spent with the ARPA funds. And it gives us a little bit more time to figure out where we're gonna have a main pump out of Lake Mattoon. There's been several different proposals over the last couple of years of, do we go down the causeway? Do we keep it where it's at? It gives us a little bit more time to get a good solid plan together and make that decision.
I also believe that rental of the eight-inch pump right now is $52,000 annually. Am I correct?
Pretty close, yes.
Yes.
The, the, so would we let this pump sit out there on a trailer part of the year?
Yes, anytime, anytime we need to pump from Lake Mattoon to Lake Paradise. So it would, it would be tied into the electrical system out there. We'd have a connection that we could tie it into electrical, tie it in. There is some piping involved in this bid proposal that we hook the pump up to it and then pump out of the lake and into a main that runs from Lake Mattoon to Lake Paradise.
Okay.
And we're, what's the waiving of the bidding?
The bidding process?
Yeah.
This is just been who we've been renting pumps off of. They're one of the biggest pump, they actually build, they, they're not a wholesaler or anything like that. They own the pumps, the components, they, it's basically a one shop system and are very, one of the biggest ones out there. So, but they, they deal with all aspects of it. So that's why it's waiving the formal bids.
Okay.
I'm just curious, is there a full or average lifespan for a piece of equipment like that? How long, how long would we anticipate that, that lasting on average?
I, I would guess around 10, 15 years easily. And depending on how much you use it, of course, but it'll probably last us 15, 20 years, you know, anticipating that we have good weather and not a lot of droughts. You know, we talked about replacing the pump that is out there at the lake with the exact same thing that was out there that we've been having problems with over the last two years. It was a little bit more money to do that. And again, it's in a shallower part of the lake, other, causes other problems. This is just kind of a, a better solution for us at this time.
It definitely puts us in a better position to serve the community and when we're in need.
Yes.
Short and long term, absolutely.
Okay, any other comments or questions anybody has? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2024-2445, waiving the bidding requirements and authorizing the allocating of $120,428.56 of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to accept a proposal from Vanda Behrner Engineering for the rehabilitation and pump replacements at Sarah Bush Lift Station and authorizing the mayor to sign the proposal.
A second to this?
I'll second.
Commissioner Cox, and comments on this one or questions?
Kind of the same situation here. The Sarah Bush Lift, Lift Stations going on, 20 some years old, does need repairs. The pumps need to be rebuilt or replaced. Vanda Behrner is, is another kind of a one-stop shop that deals directly with their, with these pumps, the engineering for the pumps, the replacement, rehabs of lift stations. We have some of their pumps. We've talked to other cities that have gone mainly to their pumps. One of the things we're looking at is if we have all our pumps the same, we have a, a repair kit that can be used on multiple pumps, not having to have six different repair kits for six different brands. So it is, like I said, other cities have been very happy with them. They gave us a good price on that, so, back in October, and have kept that same price.
And the reason why that we're waiving the bidding, is this more of an emergency? Or is this more like the same one?
We do have issues out there. Do I say it's gonna break down tomorrow? No, but it's, you know, there is a long lead time on getting these pumps, and so we need to act as fast as we can on getting it set up and getting them replaced.
Any other comments anybody has, questions? If not, roll call.
To Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Making motion to approve council decision request 2024-2446, approving the water and sewer adjustment in the amount of $1,019.16 on the Quality Housing LLC located at 111 Peach Court.
And a second to this motion.
I'll second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and any comments or questions?
This was caused by a leaking toilet, very expensive, proposition to go down.
And, and this is routine for us, of course. Do we do this kind of thing? Yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2024-2447, rejecting the bid of $749,968 for the wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier rehabilitation, 1955 tanks from Curry Construction due to budget constraints.
And a second on this.
I'll second.
Commissioner Graven, and any questions or comments on this one anybody has?
If I can find this one, Dave, or you let me take it?
Anything, Vanda Behrner, it was all over the estimate that we had anticipated. Right now, we think there might be some other options that we can pursue.
Second. Perfect. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to approve council decision request 2024-2448, authorize the employment of Steve C. Bailey to a custodial three position with a salary of $42,868.80 for the police buildings and the Burgess Osborne Auditorium effective February the 26th, 2024, pending a background check and drug screening. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Clausen, any comments, any questions anybody has on this one?
Only comment I'm making is knowing other employee issues, I don't feel it's an investment for some of the city to make this higher.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Graven.
No.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to approve council decision request 2024-2449, authorizing the allocation of $40,000 from donations to pay for a housing study to be conducted by Mattoon and Motion and Partner Evaluation Advisors. Second to that motion.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and anybody want to make any comments about this one?
Yes, it's a, you know, definitely, this is a alternate housing study that has had to act for any results, contrary to the housing study that we're under the Housing Development Authority currently. And so the idea is that we're using donations that were granted to the city from the Mattoon Area Industrial Development Corporation, about $80,000 goals donated this year specifically for housing issues. And so really, this study takes everything a step further than we're doing, and it creates actionable goals, objectives for us in terms of a gap analysis. So the main problem with housing right now is, you know, how do you pay for the roads? How do you pay for water, sewer, everything else? What is that gap to development for specific types of housing? So this will cover eight different types of housing, community, can involve, you know, single-family, multifamily, even rentals. So it's not just about homeownership, it's about developing new opportunities for, you know, apartments for, you know, your everyday worker person pay. And so this helps us identify the gap for each one of those eight different types of housing. And then, and then take all of the data that comes from this and use it to create, you know, real-world results effectively. I truly believe this is a great use of that donation because it was specifically for housing. And this basically does one half of the post which is solving the housing.
Uh, this recommendation came through the Housing Committee of Mattoon and Motion, and they believed that this is the right path to go down. Okay, very good.
I think it's actually more than just a step. I think it's a giant leap. I mean, this is a pretty good, robust study, I think. And I think the product that's gonna come out of it's gonna be very, very useful long term.
And you can see very clearly, Adam, that this is, you know, basically a base for that they put that helps enhance the sports complex. So, you know, they, they, they know what they're doing, they have that piece, and they're gonna take us where we need to go.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Do you abstain if I'm an officer on that corporation?
Okay.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. And next is department reports, starting with city administrator Kyle Gil.
I've just been working on trying to fill personnel open spots in several different departments, working on union negotiations, working on budgets mainly this week, and last, at the end of last week and, and this week, working with Beth and, and Susan on different numbers on different things. So staying plenty busy and still trying to get other meetings with developers and housing and solar and, so it's just a very busy time, but we're, we're getting everything taken care of, we hope.
Any questions for Kyle? Uh, city attorney Dan Jones.
Uh, not much news from me. Brown Shoe, we've had some developments there. We finally got a couple of valid email addresses from, got ones in Kansas City, and I've sent him several letters, and he's not responded to them, but he has made contact with the building officer. And I basically informed him that we have a hearing on March 4th. If they show up, I'm gonna start asking for fines going back to November on a daily basis, and that's prompted some activity, but I've heard that he's going to have someone out there to start demolishing the property and take it down. I've not had a chance to, to, I never get back to that, that was this time of year or so, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so I don't know what's going on, but that's where we're at, so.
Yeah, no one's been out there. I did have a couple people come in Friday, talk about possibly buying it off of this gentleman. They wanna do salvage and they wanna use parts of it for a different Brown Shoe building. So, yeah, well, we'll, they'll let us know in the next couple of weeks whether or not they are actually gonna purchase that building and.
Keep going on, putting it around.
Right. Yep.
But that's our next court date, March 4th, and I'll report back next evening. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Dan? Next is city clerk Susan O'Brien.
Just mainly working on personnel and insurance issues, various reports, and council pack, business as usual. That's it.
Good job. Summarize all the work that you do in just a few sentences.
Thank you.
Efficient.
So, any questions?
No, I'm bored, you.
For Susan, for Susan, any questions for Susan? Okay, finance, Beth Wright.
So, I'm finding the Department of Commerce with the budget, updating the things in the production. Al and I had a meeting today. Department head, and we have a schedule for 14, and optimistic that we can get this budget balanced. Revenue tracking, I distributed the current salary sheets, and the major service of revenue provision, where we were a year ago, 523, 658, 40. Last meeting, we were, we were down by 91, 596, but the gap is widening just a little bit. Everything is in for the month of January, and then is the first, I don't remember February, just that the Yogi, and that actually looks like it's, it's coming up, which is a good thing. I'm restricted cash from General Fund, it's up today, just under 11.5 million. At the last meeting, it was just over 12.6. With, we've never received any of our share dividends yet, and that's all I've got to report.
Any questions for Beth from anybody? Okay, Public Works, Dave Clark.
We mentioned the, the resolution for the rival school sidewalk, and that is currently out for advertisement, it'll be on IDOT letting on March 8th. Worked in for the family bid or whatever, should be able to get in for the meeting, and then be finished with school starts.
Good deal.
The Illinois 16 Reservicing Project from Swords into Lakeland, that is, it's still a town hold, and not right away issue there that they're trying to resolve. So hopefully that'll get resolved during the near future. Now, it's still a little bit of a headache sometime this year. We did receive a new agreement with them. I questioned their previous agreement, and it's just when I was coming in last, I'm still kinda looking at it and talking with them on a few other points, but we're looking at they've got $68,000 savings from what the original, so that's a good thing. Also reviewing other agreements with them, like the mayor gave me another one here just tonight, so we look into those, but just trying to get out of head of that and make sure that, sort of, the things that we shouldn't be paying for. We're continuing our staff meetings on a weekly basis, just trying to get better communication and so forth. See that crews are out there, they're doing more maintenance, not only within their facilities, but outside, trying to get their equipment and so forth back where it needs to be in some cases. Lake Paradise, still up and going over the spillway, so that's a good thing. We're talking about the pump, we sent them a pump back, so we've got savings there already. Bottle water leaks, sewer leaks, so those are constantly going on. Putting in some new sewer and water lines also with some, some of the developments that we've got out there. We have air. Oh, but the insurance company's gonna come in and visit the wastewater treatment plant here in the next month, so we're trying to get things out there ready and up to speed for that when they come in, and hopefully they don't find any issues with that at all. And the other thing is we're looking at our advertising and process and network bidding thing, just trying to revise that and make it a little tighter on that end. And the guys are also working on their vehicle and equipment list, so we can get a better idea of what our expenses and so forth are there, and on maintenance of the equipment that we have. So I got.
So, how long have you been here now?
Almost a month.
Almost a month?
Yeah.
I was, I was wondering how you think things are going so far?
I think it's going really well. I mean, we, we got a lot of good staff out there. And I think, you know, having weekly meetings, I think that's helping everybody, it's helping me get up to speed quicker. I think it's improving the communication between the different groups, water, sanitary, and that kind of street crowd group is, you know, if we're all on one team, we're trying to help each other, so that's kind of the message we're trying to get through to everybody.
Always good to hear. And you're not running out of work so far?
Haven't, I don't think there's a chance of that.
All right, all right. Any other questions we have?
I just wanna say Andy did a budget. In the first three weeks he was here, he did a budget.
Really?
So, yeah, several budgets.
Yet for money, I don't, we could use.
Okay. All right, any, any questions for Dave? All right, fire chief Jeff Helgoss, see you came out with a big annual report.
Finally. Seems like every time I sat down to work on that, something came up, so, yes, I'm sorry for the typo. Anyway, since our last meeting, three weeks ago, the guys have made some 228 calls for service. Did some French training, EMS training. I was also contacted by Public Works, asking if I would do some training for them in confined space and trench work, so I'm putting together presentations to hopefully keep them safe. We had our ambulances, the city inspections conducted on those, which went well, they all passed. Crew went out, was requested, pretty boy scouts, I get it, they still call those merit badges, went out to their organization and did some fire and EMS talks and training, so some kids can get some, you know, merit badges. Finally, it is, it's been nice having a full year of getting back, you know, we're interacting with public and the kids. Didn't realize how much we missed that during, during COVID, the shutdown, so. I attended a pipeline training in Charleston last week, also a tabletop exercise with County Suburbanity Management Agency, Anoth Fellow, and this Saturday I will be taking a chief officer training class down in T-Town. Our new engine, everything has arrived as of yesterday, so we will finally be going down there and getting that on next Tuesday, the 13th. The, we could go get it this week, but that day, we don't have anybody off, and as far as financial wise, it works out for us, for me, not having to pay, you know, just one person at a time instead of three going down there. So, we're gonna go get it the 13th, radio gets installed by then the 14th, so hopefully by early the following week, we'll be in service, ready to go. Like, that's all I've got. Unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Jeff? Okay, so we go to chief Sam Games with the Mattoon Police Department.[1773.46]
Uh, I'll give you some stats for the last two weeks because I forgot, it's been three since we've met, it's just. Eight hundred and fifty-five calls for service and fifty-one arrests in the last two weeks. Uh, you got an annual report from me too. Last week or, I don't remember when, but if you have any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer. Uh, that's all I have.
You had a very successful assistance with a kidnapping incident out of Wisconsin this last week?
So the block cameras are, um. I'd go on blame and say it's the best investigation tool I've seen since in my career, the block camera. You guys are pretty that we've got it installed and paid for, but, yeah. A kidnapping out of Wisconsin, we were able to capture that individual and the victim in that case and due to our block cameras, so. It's not the first time I've had some success, bigger success using those.
We had an individual come in today to visit us that wants to bring in a factory to our community. And one of the things he asked about was police force and security and crime. And he started the conversation by saying, I looked around for a security firm for our factory and found out there aren't many of them around here. He says, that's either really good news or bad news. He decided it was good news because we didn't need that kind of company around here. So that was one of the things, we don't very often hear about people that are look for that, uh, to come to an area. So, um, you know, we, you know, it's just how important police and fire really are, so. Any other questions for Jeff? Uh, let's see, arts and tourism?
I have that, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I'd send our condolences to Angelia, uh, and her family. Her father-in-law passed away recently, so she is with, uh, um, her family this evening, which, um, also like to welcome Mindy's wife to, uh, well, she's with the tourism office, if everybody doesn't know Mindy, and so she wanted to sit in tonight and see all the excitement, she said. So, and Mindy's does a great job, been doing great work for it. How long you been here, eighteen months, you're now?
Full time, I'm on my, yes, eighteen, so, ten six years.
Yeah, okay. And you do great work, we appreciate it. So, um, we'll share a report with everyone, um, on Lightworks. Um, had a good year, once again, with, uh, with our Lightworks festivities. Um, major sponsors were up this year, um, revenue up by a pretty good amount over the last, uh, last year and last two years also, um. And expenses over revenue were, uh, was about thirty, a little over thirty-two thousand dollars, so. Um, and it was a big year for investments and repairs on some of the, uh, uh, displays, so. A- a- again, it was a great tourism and, and holiday event for the city of Mattoon. Car count was up, um, over two thousand cars from last year. And the walkers on the, on the first night, um, about tripled from the year before, almost ten thousand walkers. And we verified that because, um, Mindy had, once you go through three, three clickers, you broke three and you're on your fourth, but then it broke two and you're on the third. I told her we were going to have a medical issue with her thumb by the time she was down, but she's working hard with the, with the flicker. Ninety-eight hundred people that, uh, that walked through that night, so. Lightworks continues to grow. I think everybody really enjoys it and we're starting to see it's, uh, um, just, it continues to get bigger every year, so. We'll look forward to that again next, uh, next holiday season. And in the meantime, uh, we're getting into Bagel Bites, Bagel Fest planning, um, having some discussions on Fourth of July festivities for this year. The need for volunteers, um, so those, uh, those summer programs continue and, and, uh, and look forward to reporting some details on, uh, on those as they become available. And, um, Angelia will be forwarding here shortly to you all, a, uh, little recap. Um, Angelia and Mindy went to a, um, a training school, International Festivals and Events Association Event Management School. It's a two-year continuing education program, um, getting some, some good information on, um, on special events. And, uh, we'll be sending you some, some details on, on that training here, um, shortly when she returns. That's all I have.
Very good. If you have any questions for Dave, you could ask if you want the real facts, you could ask Mindy.
This is true.
And, and you, you get, you know, special information you can work with, so anybody have any questions for either one of them? Okay.
Anything, Dan?
All right, uh, let's see, last but not least, Community Development, Alex Minishek.
So, largest news of the past two weeks, uh, what we heard last week is that, uh, our department received two separate grants from I D and R. Uh, so the first one was a six hundred thousand dollar Ozlad grant for a previous Mattoon arena. Uh, so we're talking, you know, uh, paved, uh, marine parking lot, new fishing pier, uh, three separate playgrounds for each. Uh, location there, so a ball campground to the beach, a lot of patches, and then a much needed erosion control up along the rest of the lake. Also, we're getting sixty-five thousand dollar grant from the boat area access development program from the same organization, uh, which will install an eighty-eight accessible kayak launch, uh, so that will complement the rentals that we have out there already. So huge news for us to showcase is that Mattoon continues to stay competitive, uh, every single time that we tell our story. So, great news, uh, from there. Um, there will be a housing town hall on March fourteenth at six P M. at Elevate. Uh, this is where we're going to go over all of the, uh, information that we gathered from our housing stock survey. Uh, with the G I S mapping, thanks to the partnership with Lake McCollum. Uh, still got a couple, uh, places to finish up there, thought we'd work with, uh, Zoe and Travis the next week or two to try and get that sorted out. Uh, and then from there, uh, we received nearly six hundred responses to our community survey, so the data from that is very valuable. And I've sent a copy of the council information already. Um, from there, uh, if you are interested in seeing the full presentation of the housing ordinance provisions, that's going to be at the planning commission meeting next week at five thirty P M. on Tuesday, right here. Uh, and outside of that, we've been approached by the Chicago Region Police Initiative to apply for a grant. Whenever that happens, that means you probably got to get it. Uh, so really good news there, it's anywhere from twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and we're primarily going to do that for tree inventory, it's going to enable, uh, Public Works and the Parks Department to really get a scope of the health of the city-owned trees. Uh, so that we're able to, you know, really just make sure we're taking care of them, but also identify future grant opportunities to kind of, you know, reduce the burden that that puts on our current budget. Uh, from there, um, there, yeah, I, I've been needing to bring this up for about a week or so. Uh, there is a developer that wants to give forty thousand dollars to us for easement, uh, out by the dog park. Uh, it's basically a broadband company that wants to construct a, you know, a small little station there.
It's similar to what we have, or not we have, but there's two of those little shelters on Richmond Avenue in the fifteen-hundred block. Uh, they want to do something like that. Uh, most of the time they lease the property, is this one started out as a, you know, just wanted to buy a easement. But put it on our property.
Started out like ten grand, now it's forty.
So.
But if we don't get back to them soon.
They're bad.
So, we're out, so.
Yeah, up to council, and we need to talk with what, what we'd use the area. So right now we do have a water tower there, we do have a, um, mobile, uh, communication tower there that we lease out, and then this would go next to that, so.
Well, what, should we, do we have a target date that we ought to have that on the agenda? What are you talking about?
Yeah.
You should be okay to do that?
We'll reach out, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, outside of that, uh, we are also working potentially with, uh, North Water Consultants on a water bed management plan for Mattoon. Uh, so Mattoon and Charleston have the two water sheds in the entire state in terms of, it's either phosphorus or phosphate output, I always forget which one it is. Uh, but that means that we can be really competitive for grant applications if we have a plan that's either in the works or completed. And so you look and see what they have, like Charleston with the three nineteen program and the great rack of, of lakes all around the lake, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of work. They got that because they had a watershed management plan. And so, uh, you look at the city of Decatur that also has one of those, uh, this same group helped them get nine point eight million dollars for Lake Decatur. So this, this watershed management plan, we're potentially suggesting in the future that we, uh, fund that through our funds. Estimated to be approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and they're willing to write a free three nineteen program grant for us, uh, for that price. So, you know, just something council should consider. Uh, and, you know, I, I really feel this is going to open up opportunities for us, uh, for future grants every single year for the duration of that plan. Outside of that, Kyle, I wasn't sure if you wanted to talk about the, uh, solar farm.
So, yeah, we, we have the solar farm that has been suggested out on Western Avenue, uh, to the north, you know, uh, we've, we've had concerns from the, the neighbors out there, concerns about looking at the solar farm. Um, we were talking to them about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, that, uh, you know, they've talked about maybe some kind of housing aspect out there. Um, the neighbors, some of the neighbors, you know, felt that housing in that areas, that area should be used for housing. Um, some, some prefer nothing to happen there, I'm sure, but, uh, we got talking, and when we were talking, I'm like, well, you know, just that first two hundred and fifty, three hundred foot strip along the south side of Western. If, you know, if the, the property owner would sell that first two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet, that's a little over twelve acres. You could develop twelve one-acre lots for housing along Western. Be very minimal cost to the city because there is a water main, it starts out on the south side, then jogs over the north side and runs almost the whole length of the property, I think maybe two hundred feet shy. Um, the road's already in place, so you could sell off twelve, twelve acre lots, which one acre lots allow a septic tank. Uh, this is more than three hundred feet away from any city sewer, so I E P A will allow septic tanks, as long as the health department allows it. Uh, which has some percolation tests, but this would allow for potential twelve new homes on Western Avenue. It would be a buffer between the existing homes and the solar farm. Uh, solar farm would be putting in, of course, their screening of trees and bushes because you're not going to get twelve new houses overnight, right? Um, but it's potential for housing, people that would buy those twelve lots would know that there's a solar farm behind them. So, uh, it could be, well, the, the saying I have is that win-win for everybody.
Both the reaction to the neighborhood group?
Uh, they, they don't know yet, this is just something that we actually just talked about today with the solar farm, if they would be even uh, inclined to, to think about that, and they have, we've actually talked to the property owner a little bit, um, I'm not.
Got a conversation with Mary Ellen yesterday, and so she's on board, uh, the solar folks are on board. And thi- this really achieves, I, I think, it addresses the reasonable concerns that the neighbors have for what they're looking at. Um, you know, you can reasonably expect that you're going to have a home, a home someday, uh, especially the street there. So, you know, and on top of that, it allows the property owner to do what they want with their property. So, you know, all of this brings in pretty tax revenues to the city, uh, it's win for us, and so, you know, I'm sure there will be people who complain from that group, and we'll do the best we can to address their concerns, uh, honestly. Uh, and, yeah, it, it comes at a point where, you know, we have exactly against that world in other places that are choosing other communities to live. And so this is going to get that style of housing on these one acre lots that they're looking for, so we can, in our community, most importantly, you know.
Yeah.
That area would have to be annexed into the city, those lots, those twelve lots or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, outside of that, uh, really ramping up the drug property stuff, uh, we have two properties that are soon to be slated for demolition. Uh, so very exciting, we're putting those out to bid, and then finally, uh, just thought we'd share some stuff with our new Ofa Maps, where, uh, this tracks cell phone data. Uh, and so we're, uh, basically, we're, we were approached recently through, uh, a couple of groups about, uh, a group that's interested in coming here with the sports complex, they were looking for visitation data for the lakes because they're, uh, kind of have a recreation focus. So as you can see here, in twenty twenty-three, Lake Mattoon, this is a polygon that we drew over the arena, each and both of the campgrounds. We had about a hundred and twenty thousand visitors. Uh, and then for downtown Mattoon as a whole, there could be another tab up there.
The other one, yep.
Downtown Mattoon, uh, we had about two million visitors or so, uh, and this includes repeats. Uh, so folks that are in the area consistently going there, basically you pop up on there, you spend at least, you know, three to five minutes uh, in a singular location, uh, at least one time a day there, so that is a visit. It's just, again, another great way for us to tell a story to folks that are later loading here, so.
And, and when we demoed this software, it was kind of funny, we picked Peterson Park during Lightworks, and the numbers was very close to the numbers that they counted in Lightworks, so, yeah, it.
There you go, three clickers.
Yeah, we could have saved a thumb.
Costs us three clickers.
But, yeah, there's a picture of what the polygon was for the downtown. There's all kinds of information that you can get out of that, and Alex is learning more every day as, as he's working with it, so.
Very good. Any questions for Alex?
Real quick, uh, what was the date of the town hall?
Uh, March fourteenth, six P M. at Elevate.
Okay, next we have comments by council, I want to start with, uh, Commissioner Graven, and we'll go kind of around the table, so.
Nothing, Mayor.
I think, okay. How about Commissioner Cox?
Uh, nothing for Lindsey, thank you.
If we go around the table, I'm next, right? So, uh, been spending some time on housing issues, taxi cabs, uh, sports complex. Uh, those things seem to consume some of my time, and then we should call some.
Thank you. Um, just want to, again, compliment Alex and also Whitney and John Wurtsball. And the nice thing about that, six hundred thousand Ozlad grant, there is absolutely no match needed by this city, so had some discussions with John, he's, he's got some plans and, and already works on the paving. Hopefully some time, uh, mid to late summer to get that going, and then he's even, uh, looking all the way into calendar year twenty-five as well. So, um, just doing, starting to do with the good weather, some cleanup out of, out of the campgrounds. And, uh, you said March fourteenth at Elevate? Uh, everybody bring your birthday cards that night. It's a big five oh for me, so, wait a minute, that's not right.
Don't you have to put a zero behind that?
Graduated Sandy's husband, that's, don't put that in the minutes, too. Got to have fun.
Let's have a more serious report.
Yeah. Last and certainly least, uh, I just want to thank Mindy and Angelia, you guys came and spoke at the exchange club and told us all about tourism and a lot of the good things, and I really appreciate that. Um, but other than that, I have nothing. Appreciate it.
Okay, so next on the agenda is a recessed, uh, closed section, closed session. So I would move recessed, closed session pursuant to Illinois Open Meeting Act for the purpose of the discussion of collective negotiating matters between the city of Mattoon's employees or their representatives of deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under five, I L C S one twenty-two C two and.
That's it, that's it. That last sentence definitely.
Oh, we do, yeah. So we can stop right there?
Yep.
All right, so I'll stop right there as instructed, and we need a second to that motion.
One second, uh.
Commissioner Phipps and, uh.
Bishop Fawcett.
Yes.
Bishop Cox.
Yes.
Bishop Graven.
Yes.
Bishop Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes, and, uh, just for everybody, we're not taking any action after we come out of, of that session.
Yeah, did you go take him out for ice cream? You go take those two ladies out for ice cream?
You're going, yeah.
We will pause at this time and mute and then come back when we come out of executive session. All right, we're good. Back in session.
Mayor, go ahead. Education from my earlier remarks.
Go ahead.
The, uh, financial guru of council.
The financial guru of council, Commissioner Graven, advised me that I misspoke, I believe, on the Lightworks report.
Right.
I believe I said.
Excess expenditure in revenue.
That would be a misspeaking, as they said.
Thought it sounded kind of.
Yes.
Okay.
So my apologies for my, my, my error, but so.
So it should be. Okay, because I, that's, when you said that, that's the way I thought he meant it.
I thought, wow.
Apparently I had to hurt this.
Well, you did say though, you spend a lot of extra money for something and I thought, well, this is a one-time deal.
Revenue.
So no gold star for you today.
No, apparently not. So thank you, Commissioner Graven, for correcting me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn there.
Mr. Cox? Second?
Second.
Second? No discussion? We can discuss it if you want.
Oh, I had to make a discussion for a second, right?
Anybody else, do you want to discuss it?
Absolutely not.
We're going to have to anyway, so let's go, real call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven?
No.
Mr. Phipps?
Abstain.
Oh, we're trouble.
This is a big one right here.
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
We're here done.